What I'd like to do is just give a brief overview of the ACSD, and then we'll go into the details of our report, hopefully in a very summarized and succinct fashion for your benefit. But our committee did work very hard this year and researched a tremendous amount of information to put together the report that you have in front of you today. And we're certainly happy to present to you this information and our recommendations, and then, of course, to take any questions you might have for clarification. So the ACSD is currently comprised of about 25 members representing the different districts. And all of you have received our documents. And I wanted to let you know that there's also an attendance record in there to let you know of the participation that each one of your ACSD members gave over the course of the year. And just to review some of our activities, this past year, we had our annual retreat with the purpose of receiving the charge from the school board, which we'll go over in more detail. We also had a very successful special education conference this year, which brought in over 1,200 people, very impressive, from all over, not just from Fairfax County, but from adjoining counties. And as we've mentioned in previous school board presentations, it seems to be developing a pretty positive reputation amongst other counties that are neighboring, and folks are coming over from distances, even from Maryland, to understand what it is that Fairfax County is doing and the types of workshops that we offer. So it's actually been quite successful, and we're very pleased that it's been taking such a positive track. Our keynote speaker this year was Dr. Nancy Mather. She's internationally known as one of the founders of the Woodcock-Johnson Evaluation, which is a standardized assessment tool that's often used in educational settings. She's also an expert in learning disabilities. And she gave a great keynote presentation. And along with that came about 61 workshops through the conference agenda that focused on things ranging from executive function, assessment tools for students with disabilities, early intervention programs, treatment of anxious disorders, dyslexia, and extracurricular activities and access for special education students. At the special education conference, we also honored some outstanding FCPS staff who received first-class awards for their excellence in their everyday work. And those were Mark Thompson, a teacher at McLean High School; Sarah Pike, a teacher at Bush Hill Elementary; John Graham, a music teacher at Lake Braddock; Alexis Yang, a special education teacher at Sangster Elementary School. And then a special award was given to Jane Lipp for over 30 years of service to FCPS. So we were really pleased to see these awards given out to some very deserving recipients. During the course of our meetings over the year, we had public comments from various folks from the community. And some of these topics that were brought forward had to do with auditory processing disorders, access to ACSD members for expressing concerns, twice-exceptional students, so those students who have complex learning needs, but who are also very gifted in other areas; students who are on the margins of special education, so those who may be sub-threshold for some of the entry criteria that would normally give them access to services, was a topic. And then the collaboration between the school and the family in supporting students with disabilities. During the course of the year, we did have a lot of great support from FCPS staff. So we just wanted to thank some folks who were absolutely instrumental in the development of our report and the work that we did this year. So we wanted to give a special thanks to Mike Bloom, Kate Salerno, Ellie Stack, Mary Beth Cunningham, Jane Strong, Denise Forrest, Natasha Anthony, our liaison Elizabeth Schultz, who we value tremendously, and of course Irene Meyer and Jane Lipp for their continued support of our mission. Okay? So what I'd like to do is move to our committee's charge and talk specifically about the work that we did this year and the information gathered to put together this report. So I'll hand it over to my colleague Sheri, who can talk to us a little bit more.
So the committee's charge, which is listed in our report, was actually divided from a larger charge. We decided that the charge that the school board provided to us was very encompassing. So we divided it into two portions. I'm not going to read it, but it's on page five of the report. And essentially, we were dealing with inclusive practices in Fairfax County public schools. The question of inclusion is the idea of belonging, and whether it's an academic setting or extracurricular setting. You know, most students, as well as adults, want to feel like they belong. The IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, doesn't actually mention the word "inclusion," but it talks about it in terms of a least restrictive environment. The law says that students with disabilities must be educated with children who are non-disabled, and that special classes, separate schooling, or other removal from general education environment may only occur if the student, due to the severity of the disability, cannot be educated in the general education environment with the use of supplementary aids and services. So the presumption is that students will be in the general education environment, except when they can't be. Inclusion benefits both students with disabilities and students who do not have disabilities. There are some studies that show there's better performance in reading and math; there's higher gains in adaptive behaviors. And you can imagine, when you have a student with a disability, they can emulate a neurotypical child better than in a gen ed environment. There's improved social competence and communication skills, a higher level of social interaction. There's some studies that we included in the appendices of the report that give more specific examples. Students without disabilities, they learn inclusion, empathy, compassion, resiliency. So there's benefits to both students with disabilities and students without disabilities. Our committee felt that the overriding principle was that we needed to create a culture of inclusion in Fairfax County public schools. There are some initiatives in place, but overall, we felt that there needs to be a culture and even a definition of what inclusion means to the students of Fairfax County. Some of the proposals were to shift the focus in IEP meetings from the time spent in special education to focus on meaningful ways to include students in the general education environment. That included developing an inclusion assessment tool that can be used collaboratively at the IEP meetings to determine how to include the student in the environment. And that is inclusion even beyond the specials like art, music, PE. Students can be included in the general education curriculum as well. We discussed developing an online inclusion resource, such as a FCPS staff inclusion resource and training webpage, which could provide information and share best practices. We also talked about expanding the current inclusion working group to include instructional services and to further develop inclusion practices. Some training sessions for teachers and administrators on removing barriers. And it could just be as simple as some scheduling barriers that can enable students to participate in a more restrictive environment on some occasions, and then a lesser restrictive environment in others. And also, we wanted to support methods that include, that facilitate inclusion, including co-teaching modifications in the curriculum and how to adapt materials. So that's pretty much a summary of our subcommittee's reports. We're happy to take any questions, if you have any, or compliments.
Thank you so much. And no, we very much appreciate it. And I'm going to start with Ms. Schultz.
So it's interesting. I've never seen a nexus of all of our committee reports happen more clearly than I have this year. I don't know what it is, but the narrative on inclusion, the narrative on a neighborhood school, the narrative on, you know, how we meet children's needs where they are, the narrative that parents choose to educate their children closer to them, you know, for reasons of choice, not because, you know, we're not providing it, but that's, you know, you could go to a center, you could go to someplace farther away, which is sort of the removal, if you would. And I hear that again here. I have a question. You said, "doing things like scheduling." Is that impacted by transportation? Is the issue of inclusion? Because I'm worried when I hear things from facilities about not being able to find, you know, spaces. The question of inclusion and being included in your general ed population. If you're far flung, if you're having to go a distance to a school that has the resources that maybe your neighborhood school doesn't have, does the issue of scheduling, is it the master schedule of the school? Is it the master schedule of the county? Is it just the scheduling of delivery of services to a particular child? What does the scheduling look like? What is that issue?
I think that's a good, do you have the answer? I think that's a good question. In terms of our report, we were dealing with scheduling within the school. For instance, if there was a student in an autism classroom who wanted to participate in art, they perhaps weren't able to participate because they were receiving a significant part of their education at the same time in their autism classroom. So that, I mean, I'm sure there are instances where bus scheduling, because, you know, I know of students who have been educated in two schools and two environments. So I'm sure that's a component too. But we didn't really just, we didn't talk about that.
No, we didn't focus on that. One thing that I can address is, over the last several years, we've really tried to get children closer to their home schools in a self-contained model. We've worked really hard with the RAS and Francisco, Dr. Duran, Dr. Lipp, working really hard to make sure, as we open new programs, looking, working closely with facilities on where the kids are located so that we're opening the programs and we're not having to take those long bus rides. So that has been an improvement over the last couple of years.
And part of the reason I ask that is because the delivery of the services to the student, you know, if you're having, you know, somebody who's traveling, like a music teacher, traveling where you're trying to be inclusive, and because that music teacher is split over multiple schools, where that child goes to school and where the music, I mean, that's where the complication comes in, that if we don't have more proximate programs, you know, that they're closer, that, you know, we have, that becomes a scheduling outside of the building as well, and what that brings to it. The other question I have, you didn't mention it, but I've heard it before as a part of committee work and outside, that the inclusionary model, in terms of the benefit not only to the child, but to the other children, creates a path for acquiring empathy, that that's the greater good beyond the student? Is that something that, you know, is, that you definitely see?
It is. And I can tell you that, from both the education and the psychological literature, that we see tremendous benefit from these types of settings in which we integrate kids with special needs amongst those with the general education population. So for example, there was a recent clinical study that was published two years ago that looked at a program specifically. It was called the Mosaic Program, where kids with special needs were integrated into the same classroom with general education kids. And I'm happy to forge you the publication. What it showed was that comparatively to other programs, which just spoke to social competency, the kids who were in the Mosaic Program actually benefited, not just the special education kids, because they have a newfound sense of self-esteem by being integrated with the general ed population. But the general ed population kids actually started to understand the differences. And what we're really thinking about here is diversity. It's not just diversity in the traditional sense of, you know, race or socioeconomics or anything like that. It's diversity of thought. And it's important to know that people have different ways of learning. But everybody can have a profound contribution in spite of their differences. And this particular study, which was published in a peer-reviewed journal as statistically significant, showed that the differences between these kids and this type of program were much more profound than kids who were just taught general competencies.
And the reason I bring this up is because, you know, often, we're talking about the social, emotional health of our students. And, you know, the students we saw earlier this evening, you know, that's amazing. But, you know, I wonder how many students with disabilities they've come across in their academic career. And, you know, I know Robinson, for example, has a number of students. You know, we've had blind students. And watching the interaction of the general population, it alters the culture. I mean, it literally alters the way in which the students behave, you know, in, you know, the mass exodus into the halls during class change, et cetera. And I do think that that's important on the, you know, the caring culture side of student life, not necessarily just employee life, that that does have an impact. The last thing, look, ma'am, sorry, I'm emotional. The last thing, and this is not having to do with your report, but the board couldn't attend the special education conference because the board had a board conflict this year that was very painful. And so I beg and beseech that the special education conference be coordinated with the school board office next year so that, I mean, it's such a significant event. It has an opportunity for us to really see the work on the ground that it pained us, you know, to miss it. So, thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you very much. And inclusion is always a terribly important topic. And for all of us who have had children that have come through the system, the inclusion situation is just very, very important. It's kind of too bad it doesn't continue on in life, but at least we do a good job when our kids are with us. I guess one of the interesting things, Mr. Schultz, I was going to say, both Langley and McLean have large special education populations. McLean particularly is, it's always been there. And Langley also has a significant autism program. And it enriches the school. And the kids and the teachers are always looking for more ways to incorporate and celebrate, and it's good. It's great. I, one question, you may not be able to answer this, but I know in all the years that I've been in this position, we occasionally have youngsters with significant needs, and the parents never sign the IEP, but there are children. And they, we end up totally including them. But then the principal ends up allocating a staff person full-time to the child, because it's the only way it's going to work. And, but if the parent has never signed the IEP, and I've never figured out how we pay for that, but we do. And I, because it's what the child needs. I don't know if anybody can ever talk about that.
Probably up my alley. Technically, if they've never signed an IEP, then you're not required to provide services.
I know, but we have caring administrators, and we...
Well, arguably, having a one-on-one, I'm a special education attorney. So arguably, having a one-on-one aide is a very restrictive environment. Are you saying that the parent is refusing, like, placement at, like, Key Center or Kilmer Center?
Yeah, I've come across that over the years. And so we just, you know, and the student may be fully integrated in the entire program, but the only way to, but anyway, I've...
Well, my philosophy is to presume competency. So you, even if you have a student who appears disengaged, you don't know what they're absorbing.
No, I know.
So if they're not going to make progress in probably either environment, then I would prefer to see them in the gen ed environment and absorbing.
Right, and that sometimes happens. But I guess that's my question. If, if, if there is, you know, we would prefer having all the paperwork signed for whatever reason. Sometimes it just never, you know, but we still do our best for the child.
I know, I appreciate that. But the law says least restrictive environment, and that's what we need to do.
But in these cases, they are fully, you know...
So I'm wondering if in those cases, some parents could receive a little bit of parent education in terms of, just some awareness, in terms of what they're offered, what can be made available for them?
Sometimes it doesn't work either.
Okay, yeah, so it's case by case, definitely.
Case by case. But I was going to say, we have such dedicated administrators and teachers, and that, you know, even if the parent doesn't agree, we provide the staffing that the child needs so the child has a good experience, you know, perambulating throughout the entire building with all the other kiddos. And it's the only way to make it work.
Now, there's the "I" in the IEP is the individualized. And many times, I feel like the parents also, you have to treat them in a very individualized manner, so, you know...
So when you talk about inclusion, in some cases, I mean, we call 100% of the way. And it works, but it's a little unusual sometimes. So, thank you. Kudos to our teachers.
Mrs. Corbin-Sanders?
Thank you, and thank you for all you do for our kids every day. And this committee is, I love the fact that this committee always presents its report on the same night as the Advanced Academics because they really need to look at, we need to look at it as a whole child and that all of our services apply to kids. And we have to meet them where they're at, rather than having kids meet us where we're at. So I appreciated your emphasis on the inclusion programs because those programs benefit not only the students that have IEPs, but students that don't. We have inclusion programs throughout the West Potomac Pyramid. My children went to Bellevue, where there is an autism center. And what was interesting is, as they matriculated and went on to college, they were both approached to provide support to students that had IEPs in college. And that they actually felt very comfortable because the counselors came into their classrooms and said, "We need people who can do this." And both girls felt comfortable because their model here in Fairfax County had been an inclusion model. So thank you for that. I do have a couple of questions regarding, and just a little bit more on that as far as it builds empathy. And I think that the caring culture does require the inclusion. But I was surprised when you said that Instructional Services, and I want clarification on this, Instructional Services today does not have a member on the Inclusion Working Group. Is that accurate?
Well, I can also address it and then let Mike Bloom talk about it because he's our Inclusion Work Group Chair. But I want to preface it by, we work very collaboratively with Instructional Services. Both Mike and I are on the ISD leadership team that Noel runs. Denise Forrest is here. She's my Early Childhood Special Ed Coordinator. She and Maura Burke are glued at the hip with trying to provide inclusive services to preschool children. So I think that's a little misleading in the fact that it looks like we don't collaborate, and we collaborate constantly with Instructional Services. We serve on their interview panels, and we work together on a literacy steering committee. You know, I can go on and on about all the things we do together. But Mike, do you want to address the members of the panel and what you have on the work group? Mike's the coordinator for pre-K-12 special ed instruction.
So when we started our work with the Inclusion Work Group, we started with a group of primarily individuals from Department of Special Services, a lot of members from our Office of Special Ed Instruction. And we also had a parent representative, who was also part of the advisory committee for students with disabilities who participated. And the initial focus of the group was to really address indicators five and six, which are the state targets for inclusion by VDOE. And so to get sort of a better handle on how we were going to address that, we sort of organized ourselves initially through DSS. And then we had certain touchpoints where we did reach out to Instructional Services to sort of expand our stakeholder group and get some feedback and some input. So we did have early on an expanded work group meeting where we invited a number of elementary, middle school, and high school principals. And we also had representatives from Instructional Services offices, like the AEP office, school counseling services, Instructional Services. So we had central office staff that also participated. And really, what we presented to them was the idea that we, as a school division, had not met certain state targets, and we were really looking for some feedback from them about what they felt we also should work on as a group or as a committee. And so we did get some additional feedback, some of the things that were actually recommended in the report around some of our training and some of our enhancements to our website, some of our initiatives, our professional development that we provide. So a lot of that input came directly from those principals. We did have a questionnaire, a best practices for inclusion questionnaire, that we provided to that stakeholder group, and we did get input from them. And we started to, early on, with that principal group, get some pockets of excellence, some places where we knew there were some really good practices taking place. So sort of expanding beyond that, as a work group, we decided that we were, our next step, going to reach out to all the elementary lead teachers and all of the secondary special ed department chairs, as well as the assistant principals at the secondary schools who oversee special education services. So we have quarterly special ed department chair and lead teacher meetings. And so we, from our work group, presented to both of those groups. And again, we were seeking input and feedback around inclusive best practices because we wanted to, as a team, sort of identify some of those best practices so that as we made enhancements to our website, we could include and we could connect people and programs because we were hearing stories of these great things that were happening at certain schools. But we were looking for more consistency, and certain parts of the county were looking for new, fresh ideas at how you include students beyond the academic day. So how do we include? Who does a really good job including students in evening activities, weekend activities? And so, again, we got a lot of feedback from, well, it really was, you know, 143 lead teachers, and we had almost 100 secondary administrators and department chairs that provided feedback. So as a committee, we're at the point now where we can add permanent members from ISD to expand the team. I know that was one of the recommendations from ACSD. So again, I just wanted you to know that we have sort of included Instructional Services and our school-based leaders along this journey, and valued their input, and use that input to sort of guide and expand beyond the original focus, which was indicators five and six, to now really go into best practices, professional development, and some of the other areas that we're working on.
And the IEP, there's another section in the report about the IEP that we want to make sure you know about.
Excellent, thank you. And then just two very quick questions, and this is more prospective. We had a Supreme Court decision a couple of months ago regarding special education and services that need to be provided. So I don't know if our expectations that parents should have for their children in special education services. And then the second piece is, have you done any reflection on possible decreases or flattening of the IDEA funding coming from the federal government, given some of the budget discussions?
Well, I can answer the second one, and then I'll defer to Dr. Jane Strong, who's our Director of Procedural Support. She's here tonight. What we've been told in working with the Council for Administrators and Special Ed, and Jane and I are both members, at our national conference in April, is that we don't expect to see changes in IDEA for next year. And we do plan to lobby Congress this summer. We go with the case, the Council for Administrators, to talk with members of Congress, to talk with them about the needs to not level fund it or decrease the IDEA. But for next year, we're okay. That's what we've been told. Jane, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about the case? She's been consulting with our attorney on the ramifications, potential ramifications.
Good evening. So I understood your question is, are we reflecting on that, you know, recent Supreme Court decision? And that answer is yes, of course. And we are doing, you know, a lot of seeking legal input and seeing, does this decision make any impact on our procedures at, you know, IEP tables? And so we have begun our development of our training package, which we'll be rolling out to our leaders and administrators and the lead teachers and department chairs this fall.
Ms. Science?
Thank you. Thank you so much for this. Every year, it's just really such good information for us. My question might feel like it's coming out of left field, and you're probably not ready for it, but we have a new special ed PTA, which you may have heard of, SEPTA, yeah. And, you know, I've been really impressed with how organized they are. And, you know, I've been really impressed with how organized they are and how ready they are to dig in. But I think they're also forming their agenda, in a way. You know, they want, they want to advocate, but I think, I think they're still trying to decide what exactly that means. And so I wondered if you had any thoughts, from all your experience in special ed and FCPS, where, what role they could, you know, what things you think they could really help with, whether it's, you know, services, communication, what, you know?
Well, we, we've met with several of the folks on SEPTA. And one thing that we would like to do is make sure that they send a representative to be a member of ACSD. Since they're affiliated with the National PTA, we already have that as a school board-approved agency. And we have not had a PTA member this year, so that's one thing I talked with the Chair about. If she would go ahead and recommend someone from SEPTA to be on ACSD. And that way, we can actually collaboratively work together with that group and not go into maybe parallel directions. But we have met with several members of that group. There's also a 2E parent committee that meets with us quarterly, I believe. And several members of SEPTA are on that committee. So they've been very collaborative. Do you want to add anything, working with them? You've also.
So one thing I would add is that I attended their first meeting, and I know some of you, all of the board members were there as well. And the energy and the interest in working with us as a school district was evident, and I welcome that. I think that it's a good organization to have, in addition to the wonderful ACSD that we have.
Actually, Ms. Science, just to let you know, I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow on, on specifically this topic, on creating the bridge to, to them and actually seeking their input for the charge for ACSD, so.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about, because, you know, obviously, inclusion is a significant part of what you guys worked on this year. And so I have just a couple of questions. The first is, in terms of the model for inclusion, do you look outside of Fairfax County? Is there, I mean, because of, as you, I mean, I think you've correctly stated it, that there's generally a focus on services, and how many hours did the student receive? And, and their classroom setting, them, and, and the, the inclusion piece of it is sort of, is left to the educators to determine where are the places that you can effectively include the child in the classroom as much as possible? And, and so I'm just wondering whether or not, since, I thought your report seemed somewhat critical of Fairfax County in terms of what we are doing in terms of having guidelines and uniformity in terms of the standard for inclusion? Did you look outside the county at all? Are there other jurisdictions that are trying to do this as well?
Technically, we didn't, we didn't look outside of the county.
Okay. Is there research that you guys have seen of other counties trying to, to do? Sort of a standardization instead of at the school level?
I, I went to a presentation by Cheryl Jorgensen recently, who is a very well-known inclusion specialist. And she discussed some initiatives, I believe they were in New Hampshire, that created an entire inclusive environment in the schools. I, I mean, personally, I think Fairfax County is, is, it's different entity, because it's such a large school district that we have our own continuum of services, right, built in. A lot of school districts don't have autism centers. They don't have schools that focus only on students with emotional disabilities. So I think we're a little bit of an enigma compared to others. But I, I do go all over the state in my own personal practice, and I think Fairfax County does a, a very good job of inclusion, compared to what I'm seeing in other, other jurisdictions in Virginia.
Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, I think that's been my experience over the years, is actually that Fairfax does a great job of trying to find ways to include. So that, so that's why I was just sort of, I mean, there's a huge focus in your report on promoting more effective inclusion in, in our schools. And so part of that was to, sounded like adjusting the IEP forms. I think you described it as a paradigm shift in your form. So with taking a look at the IEP forms, seems like quite a large task in and of itself, to make sure that they are done in a way that's going to make the process better for parents and all of the educators who are in the room trying to manage that change? Can you just speak about that a little bit?
I'll start, and Jane will jump in. You can see procedure and instruction, we tag-team here. So teams were using the form to guide their decisions. And the first section on the form that they look at for placement is special ed. So it caught my attention coming from the outside, seven years ago. It caught Jane's attention coming from the outside, because usually you look at the general ed environment and where the child can access with supplementary aids and services, as Sherri mentioned, before you go to how much special ed is needed. So we went ahead and contacted an external consultant, a former state director, a former state person that's in North Carolina now, and she reviewed many IEP forms around the nation, including ours. And we wanted to solicit her input, so we could get some external expertise as well. And she concurred with us that we needed a paradigm shift. So the first step is changing the forms, which Jane has put in motion. But the bigger shift is going to be in the training of how to utilize the forms and the mindset. Want to jump in?
So what I'll add to that is that we're redesigning a couple of the pages of the form, but it's, the paradigm shift comes in, as she said, the, the training of teachers to realize, don't approach the child's plan from the standpoint of how you're going to pull the child out for special ed. Let's approach the plan first from how are we going to support the child in general education? And so it's just getting, getting them some training and enlightenment about how to focus on that first. So the form and the boxes will help, but it's also training them, you know, in, using an agenda and using, which we have now, but in, adding to our agenda on focus on general education participation and inclusion.
All students with disabilities are general education students first. And that's the message we would like to continue to get across.
So just, just thinking through that a little bit. So when a child is identified, one of the very first things that happen is the allocation of services to that child. The child's going to get, you know, a half hour of speech a week, or something like that. Does that change, under what you're talking about, of looking to the classroom first? Do, I mean, is there any chance that parents should be concerned that maybe they're going to get a change in their service level?
So that's a good question. I think parents don't need to be concerned, because they should be a part of the team talking about, how does their child, you know, need, where does the child need services to be delivered in order to meet the goals that the team comes up collaboratively, that the child needs, needs to work on? So you, you determine, you know, what are the needs and strengths, what are the goals? Then you talk about services and where those should be delivered. So, you know, it's, it's the IEP team collaborating together to create the plan that will work for that child.
It's a very informative report, and I can tell you guys did a ton of work this year. And, and I think the focus on inclusion is totally appropriate. And I hope that we can take steps to, to make that just more consistent across all of our schools.
I too want to thank you for an excellent report. I had just, just a couple of questions. I was interested in, in you saying that you had had anecdotes about schools that were doing inclusion well, but nothing that rose to the level of being a model. Could you tell me a little bit more about that? You know, if, if you had people saying, "This is a school that's doing a great job," how, how was, how was it that that school was not a model?
I can only refer to the, the lecture that I attended with Cheryl Jorgensen. And that was a school in New Hampshire that was fully inclusive, and the results were very good. And my understanding is that the school district lost momentum and discontinued the program. And I'm not sure if it was financial or circumstances. I, I don't know the details. I can certainly find out, but I do know that it was done many, many years ago. And it was very successful, but it did lose momentum.
I guess I, I was thinking you were referring to, to schools in FCPS where, oh, you, oh, you were not referring to schools in FCPS?
No, and the Mosaic program also is a pilot program that was not done in FCPS.
I see.
It was a multi-center site study from different regions around the country.
I see, okay. I also didn't fully understand, you talked about the, the behavior issues, and cited some statistics about discipline going to, you know, office referrals declining by 10%. But you wanted different measures of efficiency or effectiveness of the responsive behavior program or other, other programs? What, what sort of measures is it that you're looking for? I'm sorry, do you want me to, to reference where, where I'm referring to?
Yes, please.
Okay. I mean, if you look at, I think it's on page 12, and a reference on page nine. I want to go back to page nine here. Unless I'm misreading this, and I, you know, I may be misreading it. You had talked about how under the behavior initiatives, that how outcomes currently are measured by changes in student discipline. And, and I, I'm reading this to say that you didn't feel that that was really the way to measure this particular effort. And then further on down, you talked about responsive instruction and.
Right, I think that we wanted, we wanted to encourage measures based on social experiences and academics, rather than on discipline.
So, I see. So you're saying that the, 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 the discipline, the, the piece on the discipline, the fact that the, the number of referrals went down, you don't think that that's really the appropriate measure? It should be more what they are doing, as opposed to sort of what they aren't doing?
Right, a decline in discipline shouldn't have to be correlated with a improvement in something else. I mean, it could be, but I think a better measure would be the other things that we mentioned in the three-tier system that has to do with academic performance, executive function, and social skills. So if we could actually see some development in those areas, for not only the special ed students, but the general education students in terms of their acceptance, that would be more valid measure in terms of understanding inclusion.
Has anybody in any jurisdiction, you know, created a, a, a good metric for that? I mean, it sounds like, I mean, are, have you created one, or have you?
Well, we actually.
Are you asking FCPS to, to do that, to find a better way?
It could be part of a tool that could be used for inclusion measure. So that was actually one of the first things that we thought of, was a proper way to define and measure inclusion, and to track those types of variables collectively would probably give us a better indicator. I think tracking any one variable is too subject to bias and, and error. So if we had triangulation amongst multiple variables, we would have a much more accurate depiction of the change over time.
Okay. Well, that, that's reasonable, and I can see how the just discipline referrals would be a, a pretty static statistic. It could be, it could depend on many things. It, it could, it could depend on, you know, a, a teacher taking a different approach to referring a child to, to the office. So I can see how it would be useful to have a, a, a more, a measure that really looks at what we're trying to look at there, so I can appreciate that. And then my last question was, you know, we, we did, as you referenced in here, we have new efforts on dyslexia. And I, I do know that, that it, you don't have conclusions as regards to how it affects inclusion. Did you have any other conclusions, though, on, on how that program is working? I mean, I realize it's new, but did you take a look at that, as to whether that's been effective, our, our efforts on dyslexia?
I don't know that we have any results on that at this time, it's still pretty early.
Okay. Fair enough. I just thought you might have had some.
One thing I can comment on is the preliminary data on the universal screener is encouraging. The pilot that we did this year in 16 schools with the interventions. And you know, we're piloting the interventions in schools next year, elementary, but we're rolling out the screener in all of the elementary schools. And that's part of our early identification for children who may have dyslexia, or have those warning signs, so we're excited about that.
Yeah, I thought that was, you know, we, I, I believe we're doing much better. And so I was, I, but I realize it's, it's, it's new, so before we get any, any firm data. So I have a couple of go-bags. Mrs. Strauss?
I wanted to follow up on something that Mr. Wilson brought up. And, and again, the emphasis, really, the reaffirmation that children are first general education students, and they belong in their neighborhood school with everybody else. And, and, and I guess I need a little more explanation on, on sort of the IEP form, and how are you going to look at that, particularly from a funding perspective? We have to make sure that we have the services, the teachers, and that we're planning appropriately, and it's based on what the children need. So do you see any change in how we identify or make sure? Because I mean, in the olden days, it was how many speech teachers, for how many hours, and, you know, how many services, yada, yada, yada. That was the way, at least from a budgeting perspective, in the handling of federal funds, state funds, local funds. That, so do you see any change in, in how that should work, or not?
Theoretically, the change in the form and how IEP teams determine the inclusiveness of the child's program shouldn't impact how we staff our schools. So all of our schools have programs for students with high incidence disabilities, like speech language impairment, learning disabilities. But the lower incidence disabilities, as you know, we have spread across certain schools. So, you know, we go through an intense process every year to determine where do we need to place those low incidence programs? And, and that process won't be impacted by this change in the IEP form.
Okay, because I was going to say, it's, we, we need to make sure that we're staffing and allocating funds, and doing what we need to do to help the kids, regardless of the form or anything else. Okay, great, thank you. Mrs. Schultz, did you have?
I just want to clarify something that you're saying, Sandy Evans, about the the discipline as a measure of behavior. And I'm, and you were here, I think, for the previous, oh, you weren't here for the student presentation earlier today. I, I'm wondering if the good, good example isn't from the student presentation, where they talked about the difference between emotional health and mental health? That, you know, measuring how much discipline a student gets is sort of the legal side, you know, sort of the medical side, which the kids described as, that's mental health. Emotional health, you know, the fact that they're having a behavior issue, the marker isn't how you discipline them, because they might not need to be disciplined. The behavior issue might not be discipline-worthy, but it still needs to be addressed. And, and the question should always be, I think, that the, the marker's got to be student achievement. I mean, isn't that going to be, you know, this is the orange line that I've talked about for six years. I worry about the orange line, you know, you know, down below every other student achievement line. So is that, is that an appropriate interpretation of what you're trying to say? Is, listen, you can't measure how many or how few discipline referrals you get as an indicator of whether or not you're addressing behavior incidents. That's not the, the linchpin.
That's correct. So I would say that measuring incidence of discipline is a measure that we can certainly look at, but it's not really indicative of somebody's adaptive function. So if we're talking about adaptation, we're talking about self-regulation, which can take into account monitoring, so let's say anxious behaviors, which are not necessarily discipline issues. So there are many other types of emotional conditions that wouldn't fall under the category of discipline-worthy, but would be markers of adaptive function.
But the, but the real issue is, is that the behavior initiatives are designed to, to mitigate behavior-related matters and issues with the student that impede learning, that impede the acquisition of information. So, you know, if, if the student is having self-regulation issues, that's not something we would discipline them for, but it does mean that they're not going to be able, if they don't, if we don't, if we're not taking care of the behavior they don't, if we're not, if we're not taking care of the behavior, underlying behavior issue, then the student isn't going to be able to learn.
Thank you very much. This was an excellent report, and we thank you for being with us tonight and answering all our questions. And with that, this work session is adjourned.